I think it's a test of our bond ra- of our rating. Does, do private investors feel that there is enough stability in the system? And I think that we will sell those, and I'm pretty sure that we're going to pass the other bond because that's been our history. That's how we funded the SME project as well as the science. And I have to admit that when I heard like, well, why don't we buy this building for 10 or 10 million dollars? I was like, duh! You know, I mean, like, I want to drop my teeth when we, we hear about spending 10 million dollars. But I remember getting that call. I was on vacation. And, you know, typically, you have one chance to do some of this stuff. I would like to say that I'm strongly in favor, and, and not just in favor, but I feel that we have an obligation to invest in the future in both of these projects. These are things that we need to do for a variety of reasons. We're using more and more energy, and we need to be smart about our energy. We can't let wait until a system collapses to invest. So I think an investment in the future is not only a test of the bond market and their assessment of us, but it's also a test of our own faith in our ability to manage our finances and to, for our future. And I believe the future is, is good. For that reason, I support both of the projects. I just would like a little bit more time to think about 23 million dollars.
Trustee Lane, I, I'm gonna stick my head out from the back of the woodshed for me. Dr. Malako, I, I endeavor to be as good as him, and I didn't in this regard. And I apologize to you for that. But I, I, I want to be clear. What I'm advocating is not for a tax increase. What I'm also advocating for is not trying to come up with this 23 million dollars overnight. And I'm glad you, you asked a question which I misunderstood, but you were responding to trustee McDonald, and your response was, hey, look, we, we are spending some of our reserves. And I should have been more clear. We already, in the first two years of these projects, we planned to spend 7 million dollars of our reserves. And as we move forward in this, in these projects, we will continue to spend $400,000 a year of the general fund. So please don't, and I take responsibility for not being clear about that. Please don't leave here with the, the idea that we're going to go out and borrow the, the entire funds that we need for both of these projects. And to the extent that this, that this came up in a, in a shorter window than, than what, what you would appreciate, I take that, I take that seriously, and I, as a relatively new person in my job, I can improve by the feedback.
Well, you know, the reason that we're all slightly in shock is because we all feel a heavy burden of stewardship of public monies. We all feel that we want our government to work well, and, and we owe it to our voters to do that. So that's my only concern.
I want to add one quick comment because trustee Lane talked about how that we've had the supporters, the voters, the support of the voters, and I want to just commend all of the voters in our district because they have supported us for years and years and have shown it. And we really appreciate the support of the community and those who, who understand the importance of education on every level.
And a portion of, I'm sorry, what we're already dedicating to this 800,000 dollars a year is from
From the previous
The item that was approved last November.
Yep. I noticed that. Trustee Barrett.
President Cavalluna, for our unrestricted reserves of 22 million dollars, I'm sure we're earning some interest on that?
Yes.
Guesstimating around 1% or lower, I would imagine?
I would have to ask Dr. Cunningham, but I'll, I'll tell you, the bond market that I'm bragging about borrowing money from is the same market that we're
That's not paying
Getting our interest
Sure, sure. That's gonna be my point.
Yes.
I think 1% is generous.
So, so option number three, going out to the taxpayers, I don't have to spend too much time on that. Everybody knows where I stand there. If we can get the 15.2 million using option number two, private bonds, I definitely would be in support of that. One of the reasons that I would rather not touch the reserves, because if I'm looking at this breakdown right here, I mean, as early as 2022, we're gonna be looking at some great savings from our, from our energy plan. And it's gonna go from 500,000 to 900,000. Two years later, it's gonna be a million dollars. It's just gonna keep adding. So there's no doubt in my mind that this is, I mean, the energy plan is an investment that we're taking on, and it's gonna pay some dividends to pay off that, that private bond that we've taken out. So me personally, I would rather, knowing that we're probably gonna be paying maybe a little bit over 2%, we're getting some kind of interest return on our 22 million dollars. We just heard a report on, you know, recruiting and enrollment, and I have full confidence that that's gonna be going in the right direction, but we don't know what the future holds. So I would rather, because I was here, a couple of my colleagues were here, and we went through some ugly times where it was not fun. So me personally, I would like to leave that unrestricted reserves, let's say, and keep building on that. Just my thoughts.
Trustee Mosip.
Yeah, I, I was raised as a child on $150 per three months for the entire family, and we really had to use what we have to sustain ourselves. And I thought I was very lucky in the, in the village to have a bike and to have Atari to play. Others didn't. So I also worked for a, an IT company downtown Detroit where the CEO was a, we're not gonna spend any dollar until we have it in our hands. And I have really, I mean, I'm not gonna add much to what everybody said, the, the residents have been very generous to support this college and to support also the school district. So to suggest another village is, is, is nothing. I don't think, I don't see any of us supporting
There will be no support at this point.
Absolutely. So I would be too outrageous to just ask them for more, over tax increase. So I, I, I am actually not surprised, but I'd like to really ask Mr. Cavalluna to say, to, to tell us if there are any other ways and of, of getting more money other than borrowing. Now, we could do some borrowing, but to borrow 15 million dollars, I'll have the same reaction that trustee Lane had. I'd like it to, to find other different ways of, of making sure that we raise money for this, for these two buildings. And if there isn't a possibility of even delaying this for another year so we can raise this money instead of borrowing and paying interest. So that's, those are just my two thoughts on this. But obviously, any, any option that would save us more money and get us more dividends quickly is, is the best option. So those are just my two, my two cents.
Just to add on that as well, I do have a lot of faith in you and Reginald to continue the great work that you're doing at the foundation. And I, I think that that'll, that'll help tremendously with both of these projects. But you can't count your chickens until they hatch. But I've seen the work that you're doing, and I'm very impressed.
Well, I appreciate that. Trustee Mosip, I, I can tell you this. If, if we did issue these bonds and raise the funds, and then after it, we, some of the philanthropic efforts that we've been working on come to fruition. This is like the mortgage that I have on my home. We, we can go to the bank and pay these off early.
Pay it off.
And I, and I can promise you that, we would do that. The only reason I'm asking for this now is because of the state law and its restriction on us in taking debt
The cap.
Not as a single district. In fact, this is, trustee Lane, this is the reason why the time window's closer, and it's because I continued to say, I don't want to go to my board yet until, and, and with this decision, until I'm sure I can't raise this money outside. And I would have continued that except for the 5% cap that we have, which, which has forced my hand. I, I, I want you to hear me clearly. This is the right thing to do. I, I feel strongly about that. But I, I completely agree with you all that we've got a lot of work to do to try and reduce the amount of borrowing we're going to do by going and showing communities what a value these buildings have. And I, and I will tell you, it's every week I'm doing that. Every week I'm going to, to show the value, and I, I'm, I'm hopeful.
Okay. I have, oh, did you have something?
Real quick, just for the audience out there, and President Cavalluna, correct me if I, if I go off different track here. We keep referring to this 5% cap. So for, for our district and our college, the SEV is 4.1 billion dollars. Okay? And a 5% cap is, puts us at 205 million dollars. That's how much, that's the maximum we can incur in debt. Okay? Right now, we're approximately at 165 million dollars. So if, and there is no reason why it shouldn't, next month, the BRICS bonds gets favorable, not from our taxpayers, definitely going from 165, that would put us over the 205 million dollars. So this window here would close. Then at that point, if we don't raise that 15.2 million dollars, we have, we're only down to two options. Either we tap under unrestricted funds, or we have to go out to the taxpayers, which I don't see that happening. So I just wanted to clear up, we keep saying 5% cap, 5% cap, I wanted to clear up for the audience that's watching here what that means.
Because, because the numbers all start to get confused.
Yeah, yeah.
I just, you know, when I came back onto the board a few years ago, I heard about this Energy Master Plan, and I was a little bit, I had a lot of questions. Let's put it this way. I mean, it seemed kind of too good to be true. You know, they're, they're gonna guarantee it no matter what kind of thing. And I guess I still hold that concern that, you know, we're gonna invest a lot of money in, in something where we really don't know what we're going to realize in a return. They're guaranteeing it, but here's my question, because we're taking out, we're looking at taking out potentially 15-year loans, so to speak, that we have to pay back. Is there some kind of, and John's not here, so I can't ask him, is there some kind of insurance policy with this company that they actually do have to? I, I, I'm gonna say this this way. My husband is a retired carpenter with the union. They are, the pension fund is broke, broke beyond broke. And they are now, he's, it's, his, his retirement fund was reduced 5% years ago. Now they're doing another 16% hi- his monthly pension, and, and they're saying it's gonna run out of money in 15 years. And too bad, tough luck. All that money you thought you were going to have in your retirement years is bye-bye. Do we have this guarantee that they're guaranteeing? Is it really a guarantee? Do we really know that if we don't get that return in our savings, that they, that this company isn't gonna go belly up somewhere in the next 10 years, and then we're, we're stuck holding a loan to pay back? That we now have to figure out a different way because we're also not seeing the returns on the energy that we had planned on?
The guarantees will be a contractual guarantee, and the only way that the provider, which is Johnson Controls, a pretty reputable multinational corporation, the only way that they would be able to escape those contractual obligations would be what you mentioned, a bankruptcy filing. And a bankruptcy filing that probably would have to end in liquidation, not just reorganization. Now, is that, is that impossible? I would say no. But with a, an organization like Johnson Controls, who won a competitive bid on this process with another large company called Siemens, it, and by the way, the contract hasn't been signed yet, and these, these bonds wouldn't be issued until we were ready to use the funds, or assured that, that we were going to use the funds, all of which would be a predicate to signing the contract. But, Madam Chair, I, I would not ask, I would not ask, I would not allow the college to take on this debt without a binding agreement with a corporation that I fully believe could
Fulfill
Fulfill and would fulfill. And I'll just say, I, I don't have the, all the data on Johnson Controls' financial situation, but I, I would imagine that this contract is not the kind of contract that would put the corporation at
Well, no, it wouldn't be us that would do it in.
So, so that's what I'm saying. I, but if that is a concern for you, I can give you more, more information on what, and then probably that would be in the process that Johnson Controls went through in the RFP
Yeah, and it's been a long time since we've had a report on that, so I, I don't have the clarity anymore
Yes.
Of the information because it was a number of years ago that we had the full report of the master plan.
Knowing Johnson Kowski, too, I would think that he had
I would hope so, but I mean, I don't know.
Done a deep dive into the background to make sure that there weren't any
Okay, so we've got two
I'd just like to remind you, President Petlicov, that Johnson Controls, 20 years ago, we took out bonds, QZAB bonds, which were
For, for
Federal bonds
Yeah.
For Johnson Control energy projects in most of our district schools.
Yes, I know that.
So they have delivered in the past. And as far as the IEP, there's no guarantee that tomorrow we won't be in a war in the Middle East, and energy prices could shoot through the roof. This is based on, on everybody's best estimate.
Yeah, I understand.
And, and what points me to having some confidence in, in it is, we, we know how it's happened in the past. We know it's worked out okay in the past. It's not, and it's not like a 30-year loan, it's a 15-year, so I'm pretty confident, and, and they have delivered.
Trustee Thorpe.
Can I make a comment on that issue? To be very quick. Rest assured, Chair Petlicov, when the contract is ready to be signed, I will, I and Vice President Sadekowski and his consultant that helped him work this contract will propose this contract for ratification by this board. So, so you're gonna, you're gonna have another full detailed report about the proposed contract, which we had hoped would happen today. But because of the nitty-gritty details of the contract that are continuing to be negotiated, we're gonna put that off until November.
Okay.
Sorry, trustee Thorpe.
I was just going to add that if something went wrong on their side with Johnson, that's even more reason why we've got the money in the bank.
Well, yeah, that's, that's what our fallback would end up being.
Right.
I get that. I just, I wanted to play devil's advocate. I'm, I'm not against, I mean, out of the three selections here, obviously, number two seems to be the wisest choice at this point in time. And I, I think you can, from the conversation around the table, safely assume that there's some kind of conversation that, that puts that at the top of the pile for next month as an agenda item. Are there any more questions or comments? All right, then, let's move on to the next
Action items. Citizen participation. Citizens wishing to address the board on agenda and non-agenda items for action who have submitted a blue card to the secretary may speak at this time. I have no blue cards.
All right, next item, please.
Special consider action, excuse me, special consideration of an action item. Are there any action items on this agenda which board members or the president wish to discuss and vote on separately? If they are, we will exclude them from the action below.
I do have on, under human resources for staff recommendations, we are polling the name of Alex Seizou, Seizou? I don't know. He, he has, he resigned before he started. Guess he got a better offer.
Better offer, yeah.
So he, he will be polled from the vote. Is there anything else? Trustee Mosip.
I have a question of, agenda or contract, number one.
Number, do you have a question that, you want to poll this item, or? I can
I mean, I, I just have the question about why is it only
Only one response.
I think everybody
I'm gonna have the same question, but I don't need it polled.
I'd like it polled.
You would like it polled?
Yes.
All right. Number one.
All right.
Any, any other? All right. Do we have a motion, please?
Move to approve action items number two through four as recommended in this agenda.
So moved?
Support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Please attach a unanimous roll. All right, let's go back to number one.
Madam Chair, may I invite Fred Steiner to the poll?
Oh, okay. Yes.
I think he, he's the one
He's the one who's gonna answer, be the answer man.
Do you want me to?
So we have to put it
It's a motion, it's
Do you want me to?
Yeah.
All right. Move to approve a contract to Altec Nuco LLC for $47,900 for the purchase of one 2009 International 4400 Bucket Utility Truck with an articulating two-person lift as requested by the Workforce and Professional Development, Workforce and Professional Department in accordance with the specifications of sealed bid 20485.
So moved.
Need a support? Okay. All right, then, trustee Mosip, do you want to ask your question?
Why was it only one bidder?
That responded.
Yeah.
That there was multiple.
That responded, yes.
Yeah.
And were there any efforts to get others to respond to the bid?
Yes, indeed. When I look at the specifications and the bid and the funding restrictions, it eliminates a lot of potential bidders. This is being funded through a DTE energy grant, $50,000, which expires November 30th. So the utility bucket truck must be on campus before November 30th.
Or we can't use that grant?
Well, or we can't use that grant money for the purchase. You know, the, the grant expires on that date, so the material has to be delivered by that date. For $50,000, well, let me put it this way, a brand-new bucket utility truck costing the neighborhood of $100,000. For $50,000, I did a lot of research on this, you're looking at a truck that is going to be about 10 years old with about 100,000 miles on it. There aren't a whole lot of those out there. I did a lot of searching. Besides the nine companies that I listed here that actually received a bid spec, I looked at about a dozen more just to see if they're even possible candidates for this. The, the company that gave us the bid, Altec NUECO, is, is actually in the business of refurbishing these used utility bucket trucks and bringing them up to current standards. It's, it's a difficult process. It's a really unique piece of equipment that requires special certifications to operate and maintain, you know, the vehicle. So there aren't a whole lot of those around. You know, the potential suppliers you see on this list come from an area that covers the entire Midwest and Pennsylvania and a couple southern states and basically just about everybody east of the Mississippi that had, you know, at least some reference here. So it's a limited market, limited availability, you know, kind of situation.
So you're saying the DTE grant is 50,000, but where the, the bid is 47,000, so that's a savings of 2,100, if I'm doing the math correctly?
Well, that would leave 2,100 dollars left for the DTE program to
Okay.
You know, spend on some, some other material that
Maybe new seat covers or something.
If we can get it here by November 30th, so.
So, and, and those other competitors were reached out to, to present a bid, or they were, obviously, it seems like they, they did not respond to this bid.
Correct. They did not submit a response, and, and typically, when a company is not interested or can't provide
They're like a waste of time
Yeah, they don't usually tell us, you know.
I have to personally say that I was kind of impressed with the thought that you can get a used bucket
10-year-old used truck for 47,000. My husband's 10-year-old used truck wasn't a whole lot less than that, and it's just an F-150.
Trustee Thorpe. But I also wanted to say the fact that you said that it was refurbished, I think that even just makes it all the better.
Yes, they, it
And this company specializes in that?
Right. It, it's actually a 25-day delivery time. The truck's on their lot, but before they send it to us, they will, you know, make sure that everything is, is in operating order. You know, they've got the, the parts and the service to, to handle those kinds of repairs, and then they will deliver it to us. And they also provide training on the use and operation, and they can also have the ability to provide maintenance.
Trustee Thorpe.
Tomorrow morning, how about?
The, you've done a great job explaining everything, Fred, and when I read through this at first, I think I had the same concerns that others have had, where we've seen so many times bid contracts have come back, and maybe we reach out to eight or 10, and we get one or two. I don't know if it's possible, then, when we list this, to just maybe paraphrase some of the things that you said, like, listen, this was highly specified, not a lot of people have it. So I'm guessing some of these never even had it on the lot, so to speak.
Right.
Second thing is, as soon as I saw that the DTE energy grant was gonna cover 100% and this isn't coming out of our pocket, where I have to worry that something's going wrong. But again, if we can do something to make sure that we know ahead of time as to why do we get such a low response rate, it can be useful.
Well, can, can I also encourage you to make a call, because we get, get a lot of this information the week prior, if you have a question like that?
Yeah, I apologize.
You can, you can, you can make a phone call, either call President Cavalluna, and then he'll contact and get the answer for you so that we don't take the time here at the meeting if it's something basically that looks a little out of the ordinary, but nothing major that you want to do. That's what I usually do when I have those types of questions.
I'd like just to, from what trustee Thorpe said, if we, for any contract that, if we get only one sole provider, that we get some explanation of why that happened. I think that will answer our questions prior to us even asking that question, so.
Well, I'd rather not go to the board with a sole source report, you know.
Yeah, there is, there is a
Sorry, though, we've made the effort to try to solicit competitive bids, but yes, I'll, I will include, you know, explanation on
Sure.
Why the response is so poor sometimes.
All right, then. We have a motion on the, thank you, Fred.
Thank you.
A motion on the floor. Do we need a roll call? Do we need a roll call?
He called for roll call.
Who called for roll call?
I, I didn't.
No, he didn't call for a roll call. He just wanted to poll.
For this.
Yeah, he just wanted to poll. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Okay, attach a unanimous roll, please. All right. Next item, please.
Board of trustees, business, acknowledgement of correspondence.
I've received none.
I did receive an invitation to the AFO board would like to invite, I believe, all of us to
Oh, something in here.
This Thursday to the, to the, to their meeting. So it's gonna be at the 5101 restaurant. So I hope to, if I'm able to take some time off from work to be with you, I'll make that effort. Thank you. Thank you for the invite.
Okay, next, please.
Board committee reports.
Trustee Lane.
Finance committee met at 5:30, and we discussed the, the capital project, which has already been brought up here.
We also had, we had a policy committee meeting, and that's part of the reason why I was late, because the finance committee ran over a little bit.
Pass the buck.
But it is
Blame, blame, blame.
I wanted to just thank, thank trustee Lane for her question last month. She, um, excuse me, we discussed the temporary protective status, and she brought up some concerns that were legitimate concerns, and we wanted to make sure that we understand the process who serve on that committee. And she was able to get her questions answered. So she joined us in the committee tonight, and I want to say that Dr. Me did not, so we still only had three members in that committee.
Voluntarily.
I was gonna, did you raise your hand like that?
And I will volunteer again.
So thank you, trustee Lane, for
So thank you, Trustee Lane, for joining our committee and bringing your concerns forward in, and it was a really meaningful discussion, so I appreciate that. The admin needs a little bit more time to consider what Trustee Lane's proposal was, and that was that TPS students be treated the same as DACA students. So the issue was tabled until there's a little So, and then we also discussed, we're still in the process of reorganizing and revising all of our policies and our bylaws, and we handled a chunk of those tonight. Didn't quite finish, so we're going to meet again after the meeting here and continue with what, we're almost done, but we're doing them a chunk at a time, and it's a good opportunity for all of us, too, to kind of review those bylaws. So, good work, team, and thanks for all your efforts. And thanks again, Mary, for your questions.
Trustee Barrett.
The Audit Committee met also at 6 o'clock earlier, but Plant Moran has already reported on the audit, but I just want to take this opportunity and say, it's not, it's very, very difficult to get a clean report like we did. We're not surprised, but it is very difficult, so I would like to take this opportunity to thank the team at Henry Ford College, so.
Very much so. Okay, next.
Requests for information and/or future agenda items.
Okay, I'm going to put this out to, I sent everybody an email about the board evaluations, and I also asked, in order for us to finish up that process, whether you would be in favor of a study session versus just having the evaluation discussed at a board meeting at the discussion table. Our meetings have been running really long, and I hate to just gloss over the evaluation, because I also want to have conversation about our bylaws that are specific to just the board members and policies that are specific to just the board. And so, I would like, I only heard back from two board members, but I, who were in agreement that they felt a study session would be more advantageous, so that we could have more time, maybe, possibly, a couple of hours, to go over the evaluation and what we liked and didn't like about it, what we would want to proceed with in the future, and to talk about those bylaws, especially the ones that Brad Banasik from MASB discussed in the February study session that we had, and see what progress we've made, plus some of the other things that we've had conversations about since then. So I would like to propose to everyone, and since nobody else responded, I'm going to do it here at the meeting, if you would be willing to consider, and we'll have to find out, it can be done either here at the college for an available space or at Ten Eyck, either November 12, 13, or 14, which is Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, in between the two regular board meetings, but before the holidays of Thanksgiving and